I did. Would you like, you wanted to?
I wanted to.
I wanted to.
Fifteen seconds.
One, two. Two, right.
Okay.
Okay. It just gets too much.
Yeah, yeah. Like the one time I was like, we have to finish. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. For the noise.
I know. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education regular public meeting Wednesday, March 27th. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali. Mr. Brockman. Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a choir.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Monday, January 29th, 2024, and Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, New Jersey, 08902. Mailed to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a full house. I hope everyone's doing well and is excited for the spring. We have one great presentation tonight, so at first I'll turn it over to Mrs. Chiroka.
Thank you, Madam President. Very happy, again, just like Madam President is here, to have such a full house of winter athletes. And I'd like to invite our athletic director, Mr. Sean Morell, up to be our Master of Ceremonies so we can honor our student athletes.
Thank you, thank you Board of Education. Also like to thank Mrs. Chiroka as well, and thank you for all the families and athletes and coaches who came here tonight. Hopefully everyone can hear me here now. It's like some value word.
It's a green light on?
Our own.
Sorry.
And Mr. Turo. He was here before.
He can hear you back there.
All right, so again, I'd like to thank you, everyone, for being here today. We are fortunate to recognize many athletes today. We have six All-GMC athletes in the winter season. We have thirty-two All-Division athletes. We're also fortunate to have three Coaches of the Year in the GMC with us tonight. We have four Division Championships. We have three Team Sportsmanship, and we also have a state sectional championship team here as well. So congratulations on a wonderful winter season. Not easy to do, and this is one of our most successful in recent memory. So thanks to all the athletes, again, and coaches. First, I'd like to introduce our track team, and presenting that will be our head coach, Coach Juan Grimes. He was also the GMC Boy of the Year. We were also White Division Champions.
Good evening. Good evening. Let's get my notes together, because I'm getting old. I remember things as well. As Mr. Morell said, the boys won the White Division. They also won the White Division Relay Title. They defended, so this is actually a repeat for them. I told them at the beginning of the year, I told them our mantra this year is going to be big things this year. So I was expecting big things, and they responded. Not only did they win the White Division, they were number three in state, our state section, number five in Group Four Relays. We took two, nine guys to New Balance Nationals, and we had two young men medal at the meet of champions. A four-by-two hundred meter relay posted the second fastest time in county history. We were within a second of the record, and the team ran into us on the track, which really messed us up, and I'm gonna let that one go. We also had a sophomore high jumper win the sectional title, and we have the number two and number seven ranked freshman in the state in the fifty-five and four hundred, so I think they gave you big things this year. The fellows, come in here. Let us know who you are.
Come stand on the stage.
You guys went track, you move a little faster. There's a couple of gentlemen missing, there were a couple more, but this is the core of the team. First, we have Zach on the end there. Triple jump isn't a scoring event at GMCs, however, this is one of the young men that medaled to be the champions. He took second in the state in the triple jump, and is number five all-time in county history. Next is Isaiah, who was also All-Division. He is, wait. That's Isaac, sorry. It's three years, I still can't tell him what. That's Isaac. He's one of our distant aces over there, so he's one of our guys that run the hay for us. Manish, we're gonna talk more about him in a second. And Nate, and we have Kyle right there. Isaiah? Yes, okay. Jair? I know Tess. That one I know. So that is the White Division Team of the Year. As far as all-conference, Manish, can you step forward? This is Manish. He is all-conference, All-Division. He set the school record this year in pole vault with a vault of thirteen feet one inch. He is the first vaulter in school history to medal at the meet of champions. He's also the GMC and sectional champ. Jair? It's All-Division. Can you step forward, Jair? Jair is All-Division, number two in the county in the dash. He's the lead leg of that relay that overwhelmed the county record. He is to glue the whole team together. He is consistent even when hurt, and I think he actually ran, can you remember those four by two with a broken toe? He broke it twice in the same stall. I might go go there. That's Jair.
Is it Jair?
It's a nice Jair. Isaiah? He's that four. Isaiah is one of our fifty-five perclists. He's the medalist at GMC, he's been a national qualifier. Very explosive at the blocks. He's rapidly improving, so we're looking for even more big things from him. Then we have Blake. Blake made All-Division, his first All-Division team. He made it into four hundred meter dash. He's actually one of the better quarter-mileers in the county, so we're looking for a really big thing from this rate. And the last of the boys is Nate. Step forward, Nate. I got a quick story about Nate. He's a senior. As a freshman, we weren't sure if we were going to keep him on the team. We had tryouts, but we, Mr. Morell asked athletes to go help an elderly woman shovel out her house. He was the only track kid that actually showed up, so naturally I couldn't cut him. And he spent freshman year injured. I think it was his shins, ankles, feet, everything. Everything except his ears were hurting, but he stuck with it. He stayed focused, stayed driven. We tried him at pole vault with Coach Martoya, and now he's one of the best pole vaulters in the state. Okay, congratulations, all. And for our girls, we have three girls tonight. Paige, can you come up front, please? The girls' representation is a little bit lower. Unfortunately, we haven't fully recovered yet from the COVID shutdown on the girls' side, but we still have stand-ups like you see in front of you, and I'll just go in order. Hannah, you can step forward. She is the school record holder in pole vault, GMC champion. She's number five in all, in county history. She made the All-Conference, All-Division team as steady as you can be. Everything we go, so we know we got eight to ten points under her, and that's a, that's a great relief on a old coach's mind. Yari, step forward. She made All-Conference, All-Division. Now, what's interesting about Yari is she missed most of last year with a severe ankle injury. So this, this season was supposed to be the season of just getting back into rhythm, feeling good about running again, and she messed around and got into a long jump, and we posted the number ten jump in county history, and made All- meet of champions there by, and Nationals, and that's why she is All-Conference. And then we have Kira. She is just a sophomore. We call her Babyface, if you can say. We had a bunch of nicknames. That's the one that sticks, so she has a baby face, so we'll go with that. She battled nagging injuries all season. That kind of slowed her down, so she didn't have the season that she wanted, but she still made All-Division without being a hundred percent. She's healthy now, so look out. I'm excited to see what things are gonna happen this spring with her. Thank you. Next up, we would like to present the girls' basketball team. We have Coach Morano here. They are a sportsmanship, Red Division Sportsmanship winner.
Thanks, Coach, and congratulations to you and your team on a phenomenal season. Being a first-year head coach does not come without its trials and tribulations. The season surely had its ups and downs, as I had to learn to navigate the process of being a first-year head coach. However, one thing I found out very quickly is that the group of girls in front of me were ready to take on whatever came their way. Being in the Red Division, we saw the top teams from the county, but that never stopped them from stepping up and working hard. Despite our final record, these girls improved tremendously from November to February. It is my pleasure to recognize these young ladies with the Red Division Sportsmanship Award. Here to accept the award on our team's behalf are our program captains, Chad Elshama and Jada Shar.
Thank you. Next up, presenting will be Coach Byram for Boys Basketball.
Um, good to be a head coach. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to be able to lead these men in the battle every, every other day, so to speak. This year, we had a tough year, but a good year. We were fifteen and thirteen overall, but in the conference, we were ten and four. That says a lot for the guys that we had. We had returning guys, we had, we had three seniors, four seniors, sorry, and the rest sophomores and juniors. So we did pretty good throughout. To end our season, though, we had two well-accomplished guys who voted in to the All-White Division. And one I will talk about this time here, who was Brandon McCain. Brandon McCain averaged about eighteen points a game and a little over ten to twelve rebounds a game. Very consistent, very athletic. The reason why Brandon's not here, he was also nominated to play in the All-Star Game tonight at Old Bridge High School, so we can give it up for that as well. Brandon, what will be going on? I'm getting, my phone is ringing constantly for Brandon, for, for college, being recruited by colleges. Just as of today, he had, Rupesh is over the phone, wants to pay a visit, so hopefully we can get something out of him. My next guy is a tremendous athlete, who's a now a three-year starter, Tommy Garoma, who also was named to the All-White Division Team. And just to give you a little snippet about how good this guy is, this guy is literally two hundred and fifty points away from a thousand points. So that says a lot. Tommy also averages about twenty-five, twenty-five a game, along with maybe ten to twelve assists. This is just a guy, he's very, he's very good to get to the basket. He's, he's, he's one of the best players in the state. I'm gonna give him that tonight in front of everybody. I just need him to believe it, and I think with him being a returning starter, I think we can do more things next year, and the future is bright for North Brunswick basketball.
Next up, we are gonna have our Boys Bowling Team presented by Coach McCormick. They are White Division Champions. They are State Sectional Champions. They were Group Four State Finalists, and Coach was the GMC Boys and White Division Coach of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Boys, come on up. All right, I'm gonna try to keep this as short as I can, but still give them the credit that they deserve for the amazing season that they had. So I'm gonna kind of go through a rundown from start to finish. We had three, three returning starting varsity players. Last year, they were second place in the White Division, and Kayden promised me that there was a freshman coming up that I had to see. So we'll get to him eventually. And then they dragged along a sophomore, and then we found that we had five amazing boys, and they all came together. This is the best group of boys that I have seen, and I started in some capacity coaching since 2008. In December, we competed in the Charles Simon Baker Tournament. We placed second, only behind St. Joe's, who is number one in the state. So that was our starting tournament, and we knew from there that we had big things coming. Then in January, we competed in the Central Jersey Winter Classic. Teams from all over the state come. They finished third place in that tournament. We then, actually, the boys begged me to bowl in the Woodbridge Classic. It snowed the night before, traveled in the snow. They ended up placing third place in that tournament as well. And then finally, in February, we bowled in the Joe Romer, which is GMC teams. I think after the first game, they were in fourth place, right? And we came back all the way to not only defeat St. Joe's, but take first place in that tournament. They finished as undefeated White Division champs. They were twelve and oh, and they ended up with a twenty-one and three overall record for the season. Then we moved on to our sectional journey. We beat Christian Brothers Academy, then we bowled East Brunswick. We, they were our only regular season loss. We came back and we handily beat them to move on to the next round, or the finals of the sectional Group Four, where we competed or defeated Old Bridge. The first game, I'm gonna give you a little rundown, so it's the best, first team to win two games. So the first game, we lost by fourteen pins. Not a lot. Next game, we won by only thirty-three. The only, we, the reason we won that game is because our sophomore shot a perfect three-hundred game. If you haven't seen the video in high school, running on the screens, three hundred, twelve strikes in a row. Right? That's an amazing feat I haven't done yet, and I'm a little jealous, actually. He's gonna get a ring, a nice three-hundred ring, so that was huge, and like I said, that was the reason that we were able to win that game. We came back in the third game to handily beat Old Bridge and win the Group Four sectional Central Jersey title. That took us to the semis, where we competed against Eastern. First game, we only won by seventeen. They like to keep things close and drive me crazy. Second game, we ended up winning by twenty, so we won that match, moving us on to the finals. In the final, Central Jersey, we bowled against St. Peter's Prep. They have the number one average bowler in the state. So, what did I say? St. Peter's Stars. Sinho. We did lose, but we did make them bowl well. He bowled, what, two fifty, two sixty, the number one bowler, stayed against us. All right, so we gave them a round for our money, we ended up finishing, finishing second in the state in Group Four. GMC Individuals. Kayden, Joseph, Aiden, Anthony, Dylan, step forward. All five of those boys made it to the GMC Individual Finals. Dylan, Aiden, Anthony finished in the top thirty-two, while Kayden and Joseph finished in the top fifteen. All right, just stay where you are. Okay, and then for All-White Division, those five boys also all earned All-White Division. We'll start with Anthony. Anthony was number ten in the White Division. His high game of the season was two forty-four, and he finished with a one-seventy average. Finishing sixth in the White Division was Ian. Obviously, a three-hundred game for a six ninety-two high series. He averaged one eighty-four for the season. Pretty awesome considering this was his first year in competitive bowling. Finishing third in the White Division was Dylan with a high game of two fifty-four, high series of six eighty-nine, and finishing with a one-ninety-six average. Joseph, our freshman, finished second in the White Division with a high game of two fifty-seven, high series of six seventy-four, and an average of one ninety-nine. All right, Kayden, he finished number one in the White Division. High game, two seventy-five, high series, six ninety-two. He finished with a two-eleven average. That put him in the top one hundred averages in the state. I think at one point, he was ranked as high as twenty, he would know, twenty-five, twenty-two, somewhere along those lines. That also earned him All-Conference, and he was just named All-Group Four. There are two boys out there, Josh and Jayen. All right, they were also part of our varsity squad. They stepped up whenever we needed them. They were there, they were supportive. Josh was the first year for us, so we can see him. Josh is a sophomore, but this is his first year for us, and Jayen, this was your second. Jayen actually improved his average by twenty-five pins from last year. Okay, so, out of those boys, if you're a senior, step forward. Yeah, that's not good. And there are three more seniors that are not here. So out of eleven boys, I have seven seniors, but this is the best team that North Brunswick has ever seen, might ever see, and they worked so well as a team. I will miss them tremendously, and I wish them the best next year.
Congratulations, thank you, guys. Also, just so you know, we did wear a banner. We have a three-man club banner company that hang in the gym with your name on it, all right? Get your name in the gym, that accomplishment. Next up, we'd like to present Coach Ragabas for Swimming. Boys and Girls, White Division Champions, White Division Sportsmanship, All-Conference Sportsmanship as well. Coach was the White Division Coach of the Year for Girls. She was the White Division Coach of the Year for Boys. She was also the All-Conference Boys Coach of the Year.
Okay, before she starts, I have one girl here. Alexis Park, come on up. Alexis was named All-White Division. She was number seven in the White Division. I lost her, I think, but her average improved, I think, by nine pins from last year. Also supporting her in the back is Kayden's. They are two of our top girls. Kayden's finished twelve in the White Division, so not that far behind. We don't have any seniors on the girls' team, right? And we have now Janice Mahalik helping us as assistant coach, so I look forward to great things from them next year. Hi, everyone. I'd like to call our boys and our girls, please, so if you guys can come on up. So if you guys can pull mine up. We have some that couldn't be here. Good thing, because the whole stadium would be taken off. So I'm going to talk about both teams a little bit differently, but currently, our boys. We, for the past three years, only had eight boys. So I had talked to Mr. Morell for many years, saying we may potentially not be able to have a boys team anymore. My swim team is tired of hearing this story, but we may not be able to have a boys team anymore. You need 14 boys swimmers to fill an event, I mean. And eight is tight. I mean, we were really struggling to be able to fill lanes. I was being strategic and placing them. We were still doing well. And then this year, we now currently have 18 boys on the team, which also helped us be White Division champs, which is the first time ever in North Brunswick history that a boys team won. I'm glad that we fought for the team to keep growing. It's really made a big difference. Our girls, this is the second year in a row. So we are back-to-back Division champs for our girls, so that's really exciting. The girls also made it to the States. We swam three whole township and were able to beat them 98-72. Quarterfinals, we swam against Hunter and Central. We did not come out on top against Hunter and Central. However, it was a really great meet. Girls stepped up and did really well. So congratulations to them for two years in a row. Okay. Also, I'd like to talk about sportsmanship before I get to Division winners. This is the 11th year that North Brunswick graders has won sportsmanship, and that is voted by the GMC coaches. It's a big deal. It's a... No, it's not 11 in a row. One year during COVID, we didn't get it. It's not technically in a row. But it is a very big deal, because the swimmers take pride in representing North Brunswick with great sportsmanship and responsibility and professionalism. And I'm really proud of them. 11 years is a really long time to win that award, so. And that's boys and girls. That's not just one or the other. Even though we are two separate teams, we practice together. But they won those awards and were voted by GMC coaches, boys and girls separately. So that is a big deal. Okay, so if you... We're going to do boys first. Please step forward, Robert. Robert's a White Division swimmer, swimming the 200 free at GMCs and the 100 fly, scoring 8 in 7. Jayden is not here. He's actually swimming for his club team at Zones in another state. So he isn't here, so good luck to Jayden. He swims for Scarlet at Rutgers, so hopefully he does well. Dylan Jenkins is also not here. He is in Europe. So everyone's taking funding. Dylan swam the 50 free, scoring points at GMCs. Phillip is here. He swam the 500 free, scoring points in the 5 free, scoring 20th. Mohit scored points in the 500 free. Chris Cuesta, the 50 free style and the 100 back. And then Andre scored in the 100 fly. So congratulations to our White Division boys. And Robert is a senior. All right. To our ladies, we have Wessanki. She swam the 200 free and the 100 back, White Division. Salomi swam the 100 back and the 50 free, scoring points. Yen, 100 back and the 500 free. And she is actually working at the pool right now, lifeguarding. So she swam the 100 breast and the 50 free style. So these are our White Division. Also, we have Sammy Guanino. She swam the 100 fly and the 100 breast. I'm sorry, just kidding. 200 IM and 100 breast. And she's also our only conference swimmer that was voted in. She medaled in the 2 IM and the 100 breast along swimming relays. Sammy also qualified for the wildcard meet that was held up in New Providence, New Jersey. She just signed for meet of champions, but we expect big things and they're needing to go on the board next year. So we look forward to that next year. That's a big celebration. So congratulations, swimmers. I just wanted to say how proud I am of them. All those awards don't come easy. Everyone has worked so hard to be there. They are not only amazing athletes, but they're also incredible students at school. So I'm very, very proud of them. Good job, swimmers.
To wrap it up, we have our head wrestling coach, Coach David Sally, to come up and speak about a couple of his athletes.
Evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about our wrestling program. We do have two teams in our high school, unlike some of the other schools around us. We host the largest girls' team in the county. And Gabby leads us by example. She led the team this year as captain. She had over 28 wins. She wrestled at Queen Bee's at the East Nationals and took ninth place. Took second place at the Ramazola Invitational. She placed first at the county tournament, was county champion, at 138 pounds. And she wrestled her way through the region tournament, become a region champ. It's her first region champ in 24 years. And she placed top 12 at the state tournament down in Atlantic City. Very proud of her. So we have another possible chance to take a trip down to Atlantic City and wrestle for the state title. Joe Marr on the other side, he leads the boys team. He's our captain on the boys' side. He has over 50 career wins. He is the only four-year varsity letter winner, and he is our captain. He plays sports at the county tournament. He took third at the district. This will be the third year in a row. He qualified for the region tournament. Our regions mix up every two years. So we had Del Barton, the number one wrestling school in the country, in our way. So we fell a little bit short. But Joe Marr plans on continuing his education in wrestling at Castleton University next year, where he'll continue to wrestle.
Thank you, thank you, athletes, family, and us coaches. Really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Morell. And thank you, parents, thank you, students, thank you, coaches, for a great season. You all represent North Brunswick wonderfully, and we're really proud of all of your accomplishments. Keep going. We see some more great things ahead. Whether you're leaving to go to school away somewhere and continue to play sports, or whether you're staying with us and are going to continue in your programs. Keep up the good work.
Thank you all again for being here tonight. Definitely want to echo what Superintendent Troika said. You know, our athletics program here in North Brunswick is top tier. You all should be extremely proud of yourselves, coaches, especially the coaches that have won Coach of the Year. Congratulations. So on behalf of the board, we're very proud of you all. And thanks again for being here. So we will continue on with our meeting. That was our first and only presentation tonight. So we'll take a moment while everyone exits. If you'd like to continue to be with our meeting, we'll continue on in just a moment. All right, we'll continue on with our regular meeting. Ms. Keef, would you please take item number six?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes. Regular public meeting minutes, February 28, 2024. Executive minutes, February 28, 2024. Budget workshop minutes, March 13, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All the minutes are accepted. Thank you. Any communications this evening?
No, ma'am, Madam President.
All right, moving on to item number eight. Old business, new business?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we will move on to your administrative report then.
Thank you very much. Good evening to all our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. I would like to begin with a moment of silence in memory for our colleague and friend Jeffrey Smith, our night custodian here at Linwood in the board offices, who passed away suddenly over the weekend. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. A thank you to all of our parents and families who participated in our parent-teacher conferences last week. Parent involvement in a child's education is vitally important, and we love being able to have parents and families come into our schools and discuss and jointly support our students' learnings. This past Saturday, our Model UN Club had the opportunity to host the Model UN Conference at MBTHS with over 150 delegates from around the state. Our German teacher and Model UN Club advisor, Ben Schmoll, had his parents here, who had a fascinating story. They both have been taking tours of students to Model UN conferences throughout Europe and in Russia. And his mother actually, they both shared their stories of being translators and working at Nuremberg with previous Holocaust, with actually the prisoners who were in Nuremberg post-World War II. So some really interesting history for our students to see that live story. We enjoyed that quite a bit. Right after spring break, The Alchemist will be putting on a production of Grease at the MBTHS Auditorium on April 11 and 12 at 7:00 p.m. and at April 13 at 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. I would also like to remind parents that registration is open for the kindergarten 24-25 school year. Students must be five years old by October 1, 2024. These students are already enrolled. Those students who are already enrolled in preschool will automatically be registered for kindergarten without parents having to do a separate registration. We are heading into spring break tomorrow with an early closing, Thursday, March 27. And we will be closed from Friday, March 28 through Friday, April 5. School will resume on Monday, April 8, 2024. And please also note that schools will be closed on Wednesday, April 10, 2024, in recognition of the Muslim holiday Eid al-Fitr. I would also like to take this moment to present two women who are on our agenda this evening for approval for administrative positions. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Dominique Alderman, who's here with us. Ms. Alderman has been a dean at Judd Elementary School and has been acting director of elementary education since January. I am pleased to say that the Judd Committee unanimously picked her to fill the role of Director of Elementary Instruction at Judd. This is a vital role. And Ms. Alderman, if you'd like to just come up and say a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Absolutely. It is with deep gratitude that I accept this position. I've spent many years in the classroom, nine years as an administrator now. And I lean heavily on my own experience as like a high school and college athlete. I was actually a springboard platform diver. And it teaches you a lot about the importance of teamwork. And I am so ever thankful for my North Brunswick team, who continues to inspire me. And I am ever so thankful for my Judd admin team, because they continue to help me grow every day. So thank you so much. I am glad to accept this.
Next, I would like to introduce Ms. Norma Jackson, who is on the agenda this evening to be approved for the role of Assistant Principal at Linwood School, beginning July 1, 2024, filling in the vacancy that will occur when Mr. Ed Kowalski retires after a few years in North Brunswick at the end of the school year. Ms. Jackson has worked as a Spanish teacher and for the last five years has been an assistant principal in New Brunswick. And we'd like to welcome Ms. Jackson. So please, if you'd like to say a few words, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to accept this position. It's actually my son's birthday today.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Noah. I come with a lot of experience and ideas. Ever since I stepped foot into the district that I've driven past every day on my way to work at the North Brunswick Middle School. I felt honored to take on this opportunity. And everyone's been so welcoming. I look forward to serving the community and North Brunswick.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to you both. And as I wrap up, I would just like to wish everyone a very safe and enjoyable spring break. And that is it for my report this evening.
Thank you. Welcome to you and welcome to your new position. So thank you both. All right, we'll move on to our student reports. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Okay, so on March 1 and 2, MBTHS held our first, no, 39th Annual Rockathon. Forty students spent 24 hours rocking away and raising over 5,000 for hugs for Brandy, the North Brunswick Township Food Bank, and North Brunswick Domestic Violence Response Team.
On March 6, SGO hosted an annual Student Faculty Basketball Game. It was a close game. The faculty won on the game on the buzzer, beat by Mr. Totten.
Thirdly, SGO and the Class of 2026 hosted a dodgeball tournament on March 8. We had seven teams compete, and it was a fun night for everyone to participate in.
New members of the National Honor Society were inducted on Thursday, March 14. Over 80 new members were inducted.
And lastly, members of our MBTHS Key Club and National Honor Society were incredibly helpful during our parent-teacher conferences, serving as door knockers and giving directions for parents to navigate their way through the building. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our committee reports. We'll start this evening with the Education Report. Dr. Patel?
Yes, thank you. So the Education Committee met on Wednesday, March 20 in regards to the access for ELLs testing, which ends on March 29. Linwood and John Adams are still testing, and all the other schools are done. Preparations are underway for all schools for NJSLA testing. Letters will be sent out to families regarding the testing, and earbuds will be provided to the students. The High Impact Tutoring Plan has been approved. The plans are to provide virtual tutoring support in the classroom and virtual summer programming for students who cannot attend. In addition, provide high school students with NJGPA preparation tutoring. In regards to the Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation Grant, it's on the agenda for approval for submission tonight. Linwood and MBTMS received a STEM grant awards. We're very happy about that. The district is looking into Help Me Solutions, which provides support and resources to students, families, and staff using a healing-centered interface. The Help Me app trains all school users on the importance of asking for help, recognizing asking for help as a critical life skill, and providing a safe way to practice asking for and receiving help from one's first interaction with the school. It's accessible for staff, families, and students, available 24/7 and entered by a call center. And the plans are to have it available before the end of the school year this year. And the committee also reviewed policies as a first reading that are on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources, Vice President James will be reading the report on behalf of the committee chair, Mr. Brockman.
Yes. The Human Resources Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, March 20 to discuss various personnel and community topics. For those persons on tonight's agenda who are either resigning or retiring, the board does thank them for their service and wishes them well in their future endeavors. As of last Wednesday, certified vacancies for the 24-25 school year were posted and include high school science, elementary bilingual teaching and specialist positions in special education and preschool, for which alternate route and traditional route teacher candidates are encouraged to apply. Any new or current educator interested in joining our team can view our job openings on our website and social media pages. Our administrative team is preparing to attend for upcoming virtual job fairs as they continue to recruit staff. The first one is sponsored by CJ Pride on March 21, which has already passed, with three others in April. with three others in April and May. There are also several new hires and substitute staff on the agenda, and we welcome them all to the, welcome them all to the district. We discussed any upcoming leaves of appices and how those positions are being filled via daily subs, long-term subs, and for six teaching periods. We also discussed a process for interviewing and hiring of recently posted administrative positions. And two of those final candidates are listed on tonight's agenda, and we were just a pleasure to welcome them this evening. We welcome them to their new roles and wish them success. Mrs. Keita provided an update regarding the North Brunswick Township Hall of High School Hall of Fame. Congratulations to retired MBTHS staff members Joe LaCascio and Wayne Coakley for being named as this year's MBTHS Hall of Fame inductees in the area of lifetime recognition for their service to the students of MBTHS. The Hall of Fame Committee is working on a press release for early April and finalizing the induction program and luncheon slated for April 19th. And that concludes the HR Committee report.
Thank you. We'll move to Business Operations. Mr. Legori?
Thank you, Madam President. The Business Operations Committee met on March 20th as well at 7:00 p.m. Items that we discussed included a few items that are on our agenda this evening for approval. The first would be 10 new Linwood cafeteria tables. This is on page 18, item 3C for approval this evening. Important to note that this is being funded through our Food Service Enterprise account, meaning that any monies we make within food service are then being spent on food service. The second item on tonight's agenda is for a replacement walk-in freezer and refrigerator also at Linwood, again funded through that Food Service Enterprise account. It's on our agenda tonight on page 18, item 3D. And then the third item for consideration tonight on our agenda is an application submission for the Emergent Grant Award that we were given for $144,910. That's on page 18, item E. And that will need to detail what grant will be utilized for, it, it regards facilities improvements. One other item that we did discuss in great detail at our Business Operations Committee is the concept of transportation for our charter school students that live in town. We had a copy of Statute 18A:36A-13, which is all-around transportation for students, which details, and I'll quote, "The students who reside in the school district in which the charter school is located shall be provided transportation to the charter school on the same terms and conditions as transportation is provided to students attending the schools of the district. Non-resident students shall receive transportation services pursuant to regulations established by the State Board." So it's important to note that Central Jersey Prep, which has locations in New Brunswick and Somerset, and Thomas Edison, which is located in Somerset, are not located in North Brunswick, obviously, but our students do attend there. We have historically provided transportation to these facilities. Providing aid and lieu, however, would be much more budget-friendly with a cost savings of nearly $300,000. It should be noted that students attending other nearby charter schools already receive aid and lieu, and we're looking to strive for consistency. So more to come from this board. We also briefly discussed a draft of the calendar for 2025, 2026, which seems stratospheres away, but it's really not. So more to come with the calendar. We're not there just yet. We had a couple of other status updates, most of which, there's no new news from last month. Among the items I can report on, the MBTHS TV studio, the work is nearing completion. We're down to just a punch list with our tech department on status of some equipment. At Linwood, happy to report that the roof work, the major work is complete. The roof is sealed. And from a district point of view, the demographic study is still a work in progress, as is our MBTHS and NBTMS forensic envelope assessment, which we talked about last month. And that would conclude our report for this month.
Thank you. Negotiations, Ms. Keefe?
None at this time, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carter is our liaison to the township and, for the township mayor and council. Anything tonight, Mr. Carter?
No updates.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ali is not here tonight, but he is our liaison to the NJSBA and the Middlesex County School Boards Association. We actually had a county meeting earlier this month. It was virtual. And as a board, we had our largest turnout of our board members, at least in my four and a half years that I've been on the board. So thank you all for your willingness to work with the county, to attend those meetings. There's a lot of knowledge and information shared. And in May, we actually would love to encourage turnout for that in person. We have our Teacher of the Year for the high school, that was Middlesex County Teacher of the Year, Julie Mercier, who will be honored at that meeting. So it's, it's a great opportunity for us as a, as a board in North Brunswick to be there for her support as well. So that would conclude our committee reports for this evening. Mr. Wen, would you please take item number nine?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to approve the administrative, student, and committee reports.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All the reports are accepted. Thank you. At this time, we'll review our agenda for tonight. Monthly, we do receive this agenda in advance, so anything on here is, that's new for the evening, is bolded, but we will go through page by page. Again, we have all reviewed this well in advance. So we'll start on page four and five. Moving on to six and seven. Eight and nine. 10 and 11. 12 and 13. 14 and 15. 16 and 17. 18 and 19. 20 and 21. 22 and 23, and finishing up on 24. If we can jump back. We will go to page four. Back to page four, item number 11. And we will do a public session on agenda items only. If anyone would like to come up to the podium and speak to items on the agenda, this would be the time. We ask that you just please sign in, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed. Thank you. Dr. Patel, would you please take item number 13?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel 1 to 2, curriculum 1 to 2, miscellaneous, finance, items 1 through 4, policy and transportation 1 to 2.
Second.
I'm going to take a roll call. Mr. Carter?
Yes, to all consent agenda items with the exception of finance item 1, Bill's List College Board, for which I abstain.
Thank you. Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions, resolutions are approved. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will go to page 23, number 18. At this time, we'll have a public session on any matter. At this time, you can please approach the podium if you'd like to address the board. We ask that you sign in, state your name, and you'll be given three minutes. Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Herrick. I am the Vice President and the North Brunswick Township Education Association's Negotiations Chair. And I have a statement from the MBTEA Negotiations Team. I wanted, we wanted to congratulate you first on the central office staff, on the creation of their budget. It's a law. It's an arduous process. It takes time. It takes a lot of effort. We appreciate it. The MBTEA recognizes that it's not easy. It's not an easy process. And we appreciate seeing the services that will support our students and our staff. However, as you know, we are currently bargaining a successor agreement to our current contract. And the association is displeased to see that the current budget only allocates minimal funds to be used for raises for the staff members of the North Brunswick Township Public School employees. We would like to remind the board of the high numbers of resignations that the school system has seen in recent years, with 42 resignations this year alone. Staff are leaving the district. And when we ask them why, the majority say it's because they can make more money elsewhere. Yet we see 12 branded positions that are posted this month, and I am not saying that these are not important or necessary or worthy because every single one of them supports our students and our staff. But you cannot balance your budget on the backs of our current staff. While I was watching the budget presentation last week, I saw that the budget was described as frugal and lean. And we believe that this budget is a bit too frugal. We would like to know, with over $9 million in new CDA, what would be the tax impact to the residents of North Brunswick if you use the bank cap and the healthcare waiver to increase your budget and invest in our schools? Because that's where this is all at. Investing the money into our schools to make and keep them great. This board does an excellent job of recognizing our staff and singing our praises. And just last month, the association sang your praises for the lovely event that was here for the Governor's Education, Governor's Educator of the Year, and the Educational Support Professionals of the Year. And this month, we ask that it's time for the board to show us through action on your budget, how much you recognize our service to the children of North Brunswick. And so we urge you to take a closer look at your proposed budget. Its allocations for staff salary increases, and to use the bank cap and healthcare waivers that exist so that we could reach a successful successor agreement. We say this with all due respect. And we wish you a wonderful spring break. For those who celebrate, a happy winter as well. Thank you, Dr. Patel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Seeing none, would someone please make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I'll call it a tie, but Ms. Keefe, you got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to go into closed session. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from the discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can someone please move to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We can go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.